Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call. Wow, that sounds loud.
You're number eight?
I'm number eight. I'm gonna call-
You're number one to me, John.
I'm gonna call, yeah, let's get this going. This crowd's right.
It's getting deep.
Plan Commission study session for April 20th. Roll call, please.
Bob Rolson.
Here.
Yolanda Cardona.
Here.
John Gill.
Here.
Joe Gomez Tagel.
Here.
Bob Valois.
Here.
Jason Glassick. And John Kennedy.
Here.
We also have Attorney Adam Decker.
Here.
Engineer Ken Kraus.
Here.
Councilman Liaison Brian Blazak.
Present.
And Town Manager Joe Wizawati.
Here.
Good, thank you, sir.
All right, first on the agenda, we have the Preserve West Phase One. This is for final plat for forty-eight single-family lots and three outlots at 10365 West 101st. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Jack Slager with Schilling Development. We will be back in two weeks at the public hearing to request final plat approval for the Preserve West Phase One. This is, as your agenda shows, forty-eight single-family lots lying west of the Bull Run Ditch. This will include the new entrance off of 101st. It includes the new Eight Acre Lake. And it'll include the new bridge over Bull Run Ditch that will connect back into, that would be the Preserve Phase Three or Four. So it'll make a nice connection with another entrance into the development. These are all ninety footer better lots, all single-family. And right now, they are in the process of putting the curbs in. We've been fighting the weather quite a bit this spring, but we should have the streets in in the next week or two. And I do have the amount from Ken Kraus for the inspection fee, so we'll get that paid before the next meeting. Hope to have the milars here and ready for signatures in two weeks.
Very good. Any questions from the board?
I'm starting to take a look at this, and I've already contacted Jack about some things. You can see that Donna Little's still on here as the Secretary of Plant Commission, but-
We'll have that corrected on the milars, yep.
And I'm almost done looking at, going through my checklist, so I'll be able to write a letter pretty soon.
No major changes or substantial changes from the primary?
No, I think being with the time of year that it is, we probably will not put the final surface of asphalt on. It's just, it's not warm enough yet, and we don't get a good surface coat. So I'll send you an email on that, so we'll probably end up providing a letter of credit for the final surface of asphalt, maybe the streetlights, anything that's not quite done.
Were you putting in a sidewalk at the Rosemary Lane and the Preserve Drive entrance off of 101st?
Yes, yep, there's a, we have a sidewalk going on one side of the entrance. And then if we look back to a year ago, or whenever we were doing all the discussions on this, we are actually going to be putting a sidewalk on the opposite side of 101st that connects our entrance back over to Saddle Creek. So we'll go ahead and calculate up the dollar amounts for those two.
I'll make Bob Valois aware that when he does his inspection for punch lists, he'll have that to look at.
Okay.
I'll tell him.
Very good.
I was gonna do it psychically.
Make sure Ken gets everything in time for the letter.
Yep.
For us to read. Awesome. If not, any more questions for Jack? Ken, Sergio, any more good? All right. Next on the agenda, we have Sublime Estates. This is final plat for single-family lots at the intersection of Ninety-third and Clermont Drive.
Good evening, Doug Reddick.
How are you, sir?
DBG. Mike Granis is here, owner of Sublime Development. This is a project that was started last year. It's only six lots on the north side of Ninety-third Avenue, right at Clermont Drive. Just a little cul-de-sac. These are all R1 oversized lots. A lot of them are even over one acre. So the project was started last year. They could not get the roads in because the weather turned. So they just actually passed proof roll yesterday, so stone will be going in hopefully by the end of this week. Curbs next week, and we hope to be back in a couple of weeks to get final plat approval.
Very good. Any questions from the board? Ken, have you received all the information you need for a letter?
I think so. I think I had a couple of comments that Kevin Croll has answered. There was a little confusing thing on a couple of lines that weren't in the subdivision having to do with one line but two bearings. It turns out there's two lines and two bearings.
Probably right near each other or something?
Yeah, it looks like one line on here on paper through Zoom. We got that straightened out.
Okay. Doug, quick question. Any discussion with the two owners of the lots on south of Lot Six? You know, we've been trying to, you know, get any driveways off of Ninety-third. Has there been any discussion? Have they talked to anything about?
They're not interested in anything.
Okay, because I know you got one of the driveways off, so, okay.
Right, you eliminated the one that was for the house that was there.
Yep.
But the other two are apparently not interested.
Okay.
Keep things the way they are.
No other questions from the board? We'll move on to the next item? One good, good, fair enough. Next on the agenda, we have Greystone Unit Three, proposed final plat, review of forty single-family lots and two outlots at 10606 Calumet Avenue.
Good evening, Jack Slager, Schilling Development, representing CWS Holdings. This is the second phase, or the second block of Greystone Unit Three. These are all single-family lots. This will include just connections to the existing streets that are out there. Really nothing unusual about it. The curbs and the stone are all in. We'll be paving probably next week, so we should be in good shape for final approval in two weeks.
Again, I have a question about sidewalks at the outlots.
Okay, yep, we'll calculate that up. I'll probably get you like a figure for the sidewalks and the streetlights.
I'm sorry, Ken, can you repeat that? I didn't catch that.
There's two outlots right there at the northwest corner where the gas line goes through.
Pipe line goes through, yep.
They need to put in the sidewalks on either side of the street across the frontage of those outlots.
Okay. Joe, did you have-
Yeah, I just wanted to know how many units were in this phase?
Forty, forty single-family lots.
And I forgot to ask Doug this, but there's no significant changes from the primary on this? Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? All right. See you in two weeks. Next on the agenda, St. John comments. We got opposed amendment, PUD rezone for mixed-use development at 10201 Calumet Avenue.
Good evening, Nick Giorgio, Sumac Architects, Griffith, Indiana. Last session, Plan Commission had a unanimous recommendation on this project, and we noted a couple of minor revisions in lighting and landscaping. We submitted those, and I'll walk you through what we changed, basically. If Sergio can pull up in our drawing package we sent, the photometrics page, which is E 2.1P. Can verbally walk you through. I can go point, but I won't be speaking into the mic here.
There you go.
Comments made, well, one, we couldn't have light spill over, over the property line to the north. We revised our deflectors on the light fixtures. There is no spill going north of the property line. The changes that we, or the revisions we made when we reviewed the lighting levels, we actually added a luminaires along Calumet for the parking lot. There's two of them, one on the north retail, one on the south retail, that are incorporated into the plan. The other area we found that was dark was as you transitioned from the retail to the live work or the mixed use, where we have, I call it the north-south roadway that stubs and goes into the future property to the north. We added four parking lot luminaires in that landscape strip between retail and live work. The previous submission had building-mounted lights, which were not correct. Now we have post-mounted luminaires, it's sort of a colonade in front of the live work on the retail. There's three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten of them. The light fixture cuts are, our correct ones are also included in here. When you go east, now that's essentially the same. We just looked at the lighting levels and we modified the fixture only. Turns out the fixture we originally had specified had like very nominal light output. The concept we've always presented is on single-family, is that those are not in the parkway. They're actually on the property line, or I'm sorry, on the single-family lot. They're post-mounted lanterns. There's one in front of each single-family home, and that carries all the way around and up through, on the west side of the road, up into connecting to the road to the north. Those same type fixtures are repeated on the residential condo units on the east side, and then we just made sure they were properly shown and corrected there. That was where the lighting revisions that we modified and updated. The other thing, couple of those revisions, as we also looked at some of the engineering layouts and what we had in landscaping, the minor landscape revisions we made on L 1.0. Basically, when you come in the boulevard, when we sat down with DBG and worked out the alignment of the incoming traffic and the width of the roads, we, it was determined that we needed full leave on the outbound, leaving the property, so you could have a left turn and a right turn when you hit Calumet. That caused us to reduce the size of the median. The lighting's still in the median, but because of that arrangement, we modified the landscaping so we wouldn't have big trees, basically, in that median. And when we added the parking lot luminaires in that north-south orientation that I indicated before, we wanted to make sure there were some trees there, but they were now conflicting with the parking lot luminaire. So now we just revised the landscaping, so it's compatible with the lighting that's there. And then the other thing-
Sorry, Nick, so in that median for the main drive, it's no longer trees, it's some sort of, is it still trees, it's not?
There's smaller trees.
Smaller trees, okay.
Smaller trees, and it is fully landscaped and shows up in the blow-up. It's just that when we, it got narrower, we had to make the plantings adjust to the width of the median. No, it's fully landscaped still.
Okay.
And same with the strip that goes north-south between, that's sort of the transition from retail to the live-work area. Just made that landscaping more compatible. And then on the cul-de-sac to the south, it turns out we had shown a tree right where the park, the street luminaire is. There used to be five trees on that cul-de-sac. And because there's a light pole luminaire on the end of it, we got rid of the tree there, so there's four instead of five. And then the rest of the landscaping is that was, as was originally proposed.
Sergio, just a quick question. I thought at the last Plan Commission, we gave the authority, since these were minor changes, just to the town manager. This doesn't have to go before the Plan Commission again? This is just informational?
Correct.
I just wanted to verify.
We wanted to make sure that you all were good with this before we move forward with it.
Okay.
So what, I think what we wanted to do was update the Plan Commission of what the recommendations were, what the changes were, and so before they go to the council next week?
Yeah.
Next, so.
Any questions, concerns, comments?
Nope.
All right. We're gonna miss ya.
I mean, I think it's been a year.
I don't think, I don't think the feeling's mutual.
We can take his name off the seat now.
Yeah.
The other question was, we assume that whatever modification or certification based on this clarification, I'll put it that way, is that this is still going to Town Council next Wednesday?
On the 27th, it's on the agenda. I know because I put it on there.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify, this is informational purposes, because I believed at the last meeting, as long as it got the blessing by the town manager. So, okay, very good.
Correct. And I believe the other correction in the PUD was get rid of vinyl siding, and that was deleted.
Yes, yeah, that was part of our, yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda, we have Lenting's Two Addition, and this is a replat. It's two actually items. One is a replat of Artesian Wells, Lot Six, for a two-lot subdivision. One would be commercial, and the other one would be R2, or replat, and then the rezone. How are you, sir?
Good. Dale Lenting, 10911 West 108th Avenue, St. John. The property's right on the corner of Schneider and 231. So what I'm looking to do is, yeah, change the five acres up front to a two-acre parcel for commercial, and then add a residential lot, which is a sizable lot. Right now, the surveyor is working on it, and he's working with an engineer to try to answer some of Ken's questions. So I'm hoping in the next two to four weeks to have all of that answered.
Okay.
But yeah, until then, I really don't have too much more.
Okay. Just for you're aware, we closed the public hearing. So once Ken gets the information, review it, and it's final document, then we'll bring it back to us, and then this board will take action, some sort of action on it, so.
Okay, I don't think I'll have it in time for the next meeting in two weeks.
We'll probably want to go through a study session, just to go over what updates your surveyor, engineer has.
So I'll still plan on coming, okay.
Yeah, as long as, I mean, if, yeah, always talk to Sergio and Ken. Make sure they got the information, and there's enough information for us to review if there's more updates, that'd probably be appropriate.
The submittals should be made thirty days before the meeting, the Plan Commission takes action.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, any questions? I'm sorry, for Miss Lenting, anything? Okay, last on the agenda is we got Marion Wayside Shrine Two Addition and Development and Site Plan. Just for the boards, they came to the BZA. I believe all their, all their variants were approved. They did make some concessions with some additional landscaping and bike, potential future bike ride at some time from their variances, but all their variants were approved. So I will let you take it away, Kevin.
Thank you. Kevin Hunt, on behalf of the Marion Wayside Shrine Foundation. At the last BZA meeting, we provided some additional materials. Those were landscaping plans, so hopefully you got a chance to see those. One thing that I did notice when I was comparing the site plan to the landscaping plan is that we've added some potential landscaping. So Sergio, if you could pull up the site plan and go over one small change. Essentially, it's just going to be removing some of the asphalt area and making more landscaping.
Is that the one you wanted?
Or you want the colored one? No, it's hard to tell.
You want the colored one?
You want the cover page, okay.
So it's a pretty simple change. The fence that runs along the existing parking lot would run all the way to the top of Lot Two rather than cutting in. And we've added additional landscaping, and per the BZA's request, we will be making a small berm and some additional buffering between US 41 and the proposed structure. So, and I'll get an updated site plan before the next meeting, but that's the only small change we had. I did speak. Try and get some more information about the sidewalks. What we would propose is having a sidewalk in the public right-of-way for Lot Two. The previously subdivided area would not have a sidewalk due to it being, there's just simply no more room. So we would put that on Lot Two, though, where there is room to put a sidewalk. And in the event something changed, you know, we'd look at putting a sidewalk. But right now, US 41 butts all the way up to the detention pond and the parking lot. I did provide a concept plan of what we are looking to do to the north, show that we will have a sidewalk along US 41 and an interior sidewalk along the commercial development. It's only a concept plan, so it's not set in stone, but we do intend to incorporate the shrine parcels with that future commercial development. And that picture you see now, you can see where the landscaping was extended out from the original site plan. So we thought it would present better, look better, and have a little bit more room for guests to relax.
Questions, comments from the board? Kevin, just a quick, I know you're looking for two things. You're looking for a replat for Lot One and Two, and then we have also the site development, but it looks like Lot One is probably fully developed, right? You have the existing shrine and then the beginning of the stations. Lot Two, you have the meditation and the facility, but the rest of the lot is not, it's still gravel. So how, I mean Sergio, are we proving the site plan as it is? Or should we see further, how they plan to develop it? I mean, we're, only partial of Lot Two has got some sort of developed site plan on it.
Correct. I'm not seeing that, I mean, there's a landscape rendering. I don't know that it's an actual plan, and then photometrics, and then ideally, I don't know that it's a fully, I think it's a great representation of what they're wanting to accomplish, but I'm not sure that it's fully complete.
So we're looking at Lot Two, the flag shape from 41, and then it bends, and you have the meditation area and then the facility, but from 41 to that facility, that's, we're still looking, I know there's some landscaping out in front.
That area will remain undeveloped for the time being, with likely no development until there's future-
Access road, and then to the west of the, is that where the shrine mount, oh god.
No, the, to the west is essentially wetland area that we cannot build on.
Okay.
And then even further west on the plat in Lot Two, there's a large area that's a restrictive covenant we have with the DNR. It's a tree planting mitigation area, so we, I believe we're as far west on Lot Two as we can go, with no future plans for that easternmost portion of Lot Two. Right now, it'll continue to remain ingress egress.
My only question is, are we proving a site plan that is not fully, at least schematically laid out in some form or fashion that we could, I just don't know how that, I don't know if I've ever had a site plan that hasn't been fully sort of laid out for our, asking for our approval. And I understand it could change, so then maybe at some other time, there's amendment to the site plan. I just, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. That's just my only question I have now.
We have no further development in that area without an additional site plan.
Even just a road showing, then if there's no further development, I would just then show us some sort of schematic roadway, just so we understand that there is no future development. It's potentially just a roadway to some other connectivity to the north. Just so that, I mean, that's, I would just feel a little bit more comfortable understanding that there's not going to be any future parking lots or things like that, so.
No, the intention is not to have a future parking lot, but unfortunately, right now, we don't know where a potential road would go. I know that in the concept plan, there's potential road out where we have Lot Two. I don't know if that, that will stay in. That may get removed during discussions with INDOT or with the Plan Commission. I don't know if that's going to stay there. So right now, we're just leaving it a blank canvas, because likely what'll happen is the development to the north will drive what happens with that portion. So what I'd like to do is just leave it blank with no right for us to develop it further, without further Plan Commission approval.
If Sergio and our attorney is comfortable with that. I just, I mean, you're asking for a blank canvas, but you're asking us to approve a site plan with a blank canvas. So I would just want to make sure we're covering our bases as well as your future goals. That if Sergio and Adam and Tom Manager feel comfortable with that, I think.
I think my only concern would be, are you adding any parking? Or what, what's the status on the parking spaces you have versus the square footage you're adding and you have for, or ordinance for required parking?
We are not adding any parking. I did run through that with the Building Department. I didn't believe any additional parking was needed.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Town Code Section 24594 provides that a site plan shall be submitted to the Plan Commission for approval of a number of circumstances, but of particular concern or importance tonight. Our building additions or accessory buildings shall not require Plan Commission review unless off-street parking, in addition to that already provided on the site, is required. So if there's any additional parking that might be required off-street parking, that would require site plan review. Also, any changes of building or property uses for which previous site plan approval was required. So if there are any changes of building or property uses that would also require, to the site plan as submitted, that would require the owner to come back before the Plan Commission.
Which in this case, I don't see that happening, so, okay. But are you comfortable with the, I mean, it's uncomplete, maybe not uncomplete, but a site plan of a lot that only has partially blank layout?
It will remain its existing use with just asphalt griddings at this time.
Undeveloped.
Undeveloped.
Essentially undeveloped.
Okay, very good.
So there, I do, I do have one request that, I know I've got a public hearing coming up for May 4th. I would be asking potentially for primary and final plat approval at that time, if that's acceptable, Plan Commission.
We will, a study session, we can't make any determination, but that will be, if you could ask, and that will be at the discretion of this board.
John, let me ask something really quickly.
Oh, absolutely.
This is loud. Sorry. I vaguely recall this development needing some type of waivers. Is that still the case, or?
We, we were in front of the BZA two nights ago.
Oh, that's already-
And I'll, I'm sorry, Kevin, I don't mean to interrupt.
Are you thinking sidewalk and curb?
Right, I recall that vaguely from maybe a couple of study sessions ago.
Those waivers would be granted by the Plan Commission. The waivers that we did receive, just so everyone's aware, at the BZA, the site is set back slightly from US 41. That was allowed. The depth of the parcel was allowed to be more than twice the width. The size of the building was allowed to be slightly smaller than what normally is required. And then two additional waivers with conditions, no bicycle, parking rack, except if there's future paved parking lot. And the other waiver was an adobe-type exterior on the buildings, subject to the amended, or the updated landscape plan that shows landscaping, and then adding to that an additional berm and buffering between the sightline at US 41 to the structure.
So just so we're not, are you referring to the Plan Commission waiver for curb?
Right, that's what I recall.
So you're still, you will still be requesting a waiver for curb?
For curb?
And you're still requesting a waiver for sidewalk on Lot?
One.
One.
And, and just, so, and I'm not, so they're saying hardship because of US 41 and their property lot line, they can't get it in there.
Lot Two, you're saying you're gonna, Kevin, go ahead, I'm speaking for you.
Lot Two, there is an existing, or there's room for a sidewalk in the right-of-way. We try and line it up where we- We try and line it up where we think maybe a future commercial development sidewalk would be. But realistically, if you take a look at that concept plan that I show, the sidewalk would move off of US 41. And to the left of the drive, to the south of the drive-in, there's a sidewalk going to the frontage road. So there would be connectivity that way.
So, I'm sorry, Kevin, just real quick, on the map that's shown here.
So, along, near where the cursor is, there's an eight-foot sidewalk.
And then you're gonna take it up north?
And all the way up north. And if you cross over that access point, there's a sidewalk going up north or west to the frontage road. So we do intend to make it walkable and access to the site from the commercial development. There's several, like you said, there's several reasons why a, an additional sidewalk on Lot One wouldn't work. But also, there is an existing subdivision already where the gift shop sits. So it wasn't required when we subdivided the lot the first time. I would ask that we not be required to have it, nor have a sidewalk that would go over the creek. Because there's no room on the existing road.
Kevin, do you know what the gap is between your parking lot and the D cell lane entering in?
It is, I would guess, I was there today, it was about three feet, but it's at a slope. So there's absolutely no room for a sidewalk.
Looks like it's changed since then, John, if you look at this.
I agree with him. I was out there last week, and I looked at it too. There's, there's no room for a sidewalk.
Yeah, I think it's changed since this picture here. Looks like it's a lot wider, the D Excel lane.
And then the, while the detention pond is, looks a little setback. It does slope down. There is no room there. We did try and find some alternative routes, but at this time, we don't, we don't have any alternative routes.
So, curb and gutter waiver for Lot One and Two, sidewalk waiver only for Lot One?
Correct.
Okay. Kevin, anything else for the good of the cause?
No. Is there anything else needed from us prior to the next meeting?
I would just ask, the more detail you can give us on the site plan for Lot Two would be appreciated. But we understand you're trying to keep it as flexible as possible, but.
Correct. Like, the main reason would be for trying to connect it to the future commercial development. We don't know how that's going to plan out. So, likely when we do come in for the commercial development, we'll be adjusting this site as well to make room for a frontage road.
Wait, can you repeat that one more time?
So, when there is commercial development to the north, there will almost certainly be a frontage road. Where exactly that frontage road goes, I don't know. It'll, it'll depend. And it'll likely have to wind, as you can see in that picture, it winds around the town's well. We're likely going to go through several revisions before we have a final plan to even present to the Plan Commission. And the Plan Commission may have additional changes. And I can't tell you how quickly that development would happen. So, we do want it somewhat open and flexible for, for changes. And additionally, I don't know what'll happen to that, that east-west access road at the south end of the commercial development where, so.
Okay. So on this, Ron, you have the frontage road connecting to the shrine. Okay.
Well, with our wellhouse being there, they'll always have to have that road, at least provide us access to that wellhouse, so.
Yeah, there's an access easement.
Yeah.
A thirty-foot wide access easement all the way from the entrance drive all the way to the wellhouse.
All right. Any other questions regarding Lot One and Lot Two? All right. We will see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board before, if not, then we will adjourn. We are adjourned.